We'll get started. Roll call.
Yeah, Gardner.
Here.
Christie.
Finally here.
Deacon.
Here.
Pomelo.
Here.
Strubing.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
And Watson.
Here.
Present.
There are no previous minutes, no petitions in communication, no report of the town manager, and no public hearings tonight, so we'll go right into committee reports. The appointments committee met tonight, and unfortunately I wasn't able to be there. Do you wanna?
Be bringing something forward later in the meeting.
Forward later in the meeting, perfect. Personnel committee did not meet, and nothing to report right now. Mr. Christie?
No.
Mr. Deacon?
The transportation committee and the cemetery committee met. Transportation committee did talk about the, you know, if we're going to spend money on any intersection, the intersection of 25 and 35 does appear to be an appropriate place to spend money on, so it's certainly worth us attending to that. There are a few various things discussed, including as we go north and south on 25, maybe the northern part of it, we might take advantage of the way the road splits on either side of the House of Pizza there or thereabouts to... But nothing definitively was discussed about that other than that we need further discussion. The cemetery committee met for the first time, and the committee heard from town employees about the great steps that they've been taking over the last few years. There was a period of neglect, perhaps that's what led to the creation of the so-called Cemetery Exploratory Committee. And but we determined that the town has taken substantial steps to take charge and ensure that the cemeteries are better maintained. There's more work to do, but there is a potential that we may consider this committee in the future and consider whether or not we really want it to continue. If we have active town employees that are now addressing this subject, there may not be the particular need for an oversight committee, but that's something we can discuss again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pomelo?
Kaplan-Bruevers met tonight. We're gonna be bringing an order forward for a new ambulance in town, but we'll be discussing that when it comes forward tonight, okay?
Thank you. Mrs. Strubing?
Finance met last month. I have to check with Scott. We're signing 12 or 24-month CMP rights. They're going up, so we're trying to get the best deal that we can. I just don't know what they signed up for yet. The next meeting is the 24th of November.
Awesome. And Ms. Thomas?
I just want to add one thing about the transportation committee. We also agreed to go ahead with the survey work so that we could at least figure out where the rights of way were to understand what we want to do with the intersection and the expansion. The economic development committee, we had a joint meeting with the ordinance committee again. We got a lot accomplished. There should be some changes to the commercial building standards for the Standish Corner District. Hopefully you'll see that at the next meeting.
Mr. Watson?
Ordinance is meeting later this month, but Jen just kind of mentioned what I was going to because we had our joint meeting, so a lot of good work going on in there.
Awesome. Thank you. Consent calendar, there are no consent calendar items, unfinished business.
Yep, 100-25 amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 187 regarding mobile food services. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter 187 licenses and permits of the Standish Town Code be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. And this is Chapter 187, licenses and permits, Article 2, specific provisions. H, MFSUs licensed under this section may operate at the following town-owned lands. One, Memorial Park at 670 Osipetra West. And then to be added is two, Johnson Field, 89 Chadboard Road.
Great. Any discussion from?
No, this is the first reading of this. This was just to add, we had some requests from a couple of food service vendors to add Johnson Field to the list of eligible towns, town-owned land that they could go on, and they are limited to one at a time. And that's really it. Let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Any public comments? Seeing none. Any council comments? Mr. Pomelo?
Yeah, I'm not sure on this order. Should it state on this order that we're only allowing one vendor at a time at Johnson Field? I think at Memorial, don't we allow more than one at one time?
No, it's the same at Memorial.
I thought it was different.
One per parking lot, I believe.
Yeah, it's one per parking lot, and that's specified elsewhere in the ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I had a question as well. The, when you were saying about the vendors, they can only be at one park? You can't have two of the same food truck at each park? They can't monopolize? Is that listed anywhere? Is that? I know they have their own little thing that they work out, but can one vendor take up both parking lots at both parks at the same time?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. That would... The same, you mean the same vendor being at?
They have two trucks, right?
Yes. They have two trucks, and they have, there's two events going on, one at each field. Is it written anywhere that they can't monopolize the parking lots? Or is that for them to decide?
It's not written anywhere, but I don't, I've never seen a, I've never seen a double vendor kind of food service.
Well, me neither, but I mean, it could happen. But I know they kind of, they tend to organize themselves. I think that's what they said last time.
And I've stated this, and I'm gonna state it again tonight. This group that was here, they're, they're an organ, they organize themselves, but that doesn't mean anybody. I could go down there, or you could at least. And I think we're gonna open up a can of worms before it's over because there's a group of five or six, and they all agree when they're gonna be there. But that doesn't, we don't just cater to that one five or six group. If anybody can come in here, and I just hope that we don't get this back on our face down the road because, you know, they were indicating, well, we control it. Well, you can't because it's open to anybody to bring a truck in.
Well, the only control we have is it says one food truck per parking lot.
First come, first served.
First come, first served.
First come, first served.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what I mean.
So they can monopolize?
They can, yeah. And again, we, they are, they do have to fill out an application with the town, so we have some idea of where they're gonna be. You know, and that's, that's one, another way to track them as well, so.
Is that something that we may have to address later? Let it go for now?
Let it go and see what happens. They said they were gonna police it themselves.
If it's not an issue right now, then?
It hasn't, it hasn't been at Memorial, so.
Right.
With, in terms of, I mean, we're not, we're not being overrun with food trucks.
Right. Feel that if we do have a first come, first served type policy, if you're first at both, then that's how it is. I mean, you got there first, so. And if they're managing themselves, then I don't think it's an issue right now, so hopefully it won't be. And if they bring it to us as an issue, then we would have to come up with a plan and then vote on it and go that way.
Just wanted to put it out there.
And there, is there a definition on food truck? I mean, if a guy's got a hot dog stand, is that the food truck? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're clear that we're not saying food truck and not letting someone in with a trailer or a small truck. You know, we gotta see where that's going to, but.
Well, they have to be licensed.
There's a definition that says it's a food service establishment that has all utilities and facilities contained within it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other than a power source.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jen, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, they have to be licensed by the town, correct?
They do, yeah, so they have to submit an application with certain information, and they can't leave their unit somewhere overnight as well.
Thank you.
And it does say regard, mobile food services, not truck, like, you know what I mean? So it's like?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So as long as it meets that criteria, so. Perfect. Good. Vocal?
Yeah. Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yep.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So passes.
All right, moving on to 101-25 amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181, Land Use, Article 9, Board of Appeals, Appeals Procedure. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter 181, Land Use, Article 9, Boards of Appeals, Appeal Procedure of the Standish Town Code be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. So this is 181-67, Appeal Procedure. Struck out is a right of appeal under the provisions of this part.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
Second. Have a motion to waive the reading, seconded, all in favor? Do you not, so we will?
Sure, so.
Continue reading.
You got it.
Good wording in here that people would like to hear.
Okay.
Absolutely. 181-67, Appeal Procedure, this part is struck out. A right of appeal under the provisions of this Part 1, secured by vote of the Appeal, Board of Appeals, and then added, rights secured under Section 181-64, B, C, and D, shall expire if the work or change involved is not commenced within six months of the date of which the appeal is granted, struck out and added/or if the work or change is not substantially completed, and then added, as defined by the code enforcement officer, within two years of the date on which such appeal is granted, and this whole next section is added. Special exception approvals issued under Section 181-64A2 shall expire if an application for planning board review of the special exception use site plan review or subdivision plan review is not submitted and deemed complete within six months of the date on which the Board of Appeals approval was granted. Once a complete planning board application is submitted, the Board of Appeals special exception approvals will remain valid through the relevant planning board process and shall only expire when any planning board approval also expires if granted. If, however, the relevant application to the planning board is denied or withdrawn more than six months after the date of the Board of Appeals special exception approval, that special exception approval shall expire at the time of such denial or withdrawal. Nothing in this section shall be construed to extend the deadline by which a subdivider must submit an application for final subdivision plan approval under Section 181-82A. And this is a substitute order.
Yes, so this was, we discussed this at ordinance last, yeah, last month now, and we, I think we came to a resolution on moving this forward, changing some language and removing some language here. I, this came up, just to give you some backstory, this came up originally because the mobile home park had to go through a two-step process with the town for approval through the Board of Appeals and Planning Board, and it says in the ordinance that you have to do that within six months of each other, and that was just not gonna, that's not feasible for a project that size. So that's why this was kind of looked at. But anyway, I think we added, we added just a thing in here about substantially complete being defined by the code officer, which seemed to be good, and then removing a sentence elsewhere that didn't really change anything, I don't think. So, yeah. And again, just real quickly, I know there's, there was some concerns about ambiguity, generally concerns about ambiguity in our ordinance, which we encounter all the time, and I just want to say that as staff, we, we are completely legally justified to fall back on a dictionary definition of a word if we're unsure, as well as, once we make a decision and come to a conclusion about something, we're consistent in how we apply that going forward. So I just wanted to say that.
Great, thanks. Any public comments? Council comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
And so passes?
And 102-25 amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Prohibited Parking. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Parking and Weight Restrictions, prohibited parking of the Standish Town Code be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. Section 263-1, Prohibited Parking. It shall be unlawful to park any vehicle within the public way at the following locations. G, on lakeside of Ward's Cove Road for its entire length, and then they added, and on the landslide of Ward's Cove Road from the southerly intersection with Route 114 through the intersection with Sambar Road.
Again, wrote this real quick. On the water side of Ward's Cove, there's completely no parking, but this just specifies no parking from Sambar to 114, essentially.
Great. Public comments? Council comments? Vocal?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So passes. Moving on to new business?
And then we just have one more left, which is 106-25, Amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 151, General Assistance Ordinance, Adopt Appendices, that word, for the maximum levels of assistance as provided by the Main Department of Health and Human Services. The town of Standish hereby ordains that the following amendments to the General Assistance Ordinance effective immediately upon adoption. Order that the General Assistance Ordinance is amended by adopting the appendices for overall maximum levels of assistance, which include dollar figures, rates, percentages, and tables, which are determined by the Main Department of Human Services for use in the General Assistance Program, are approved by council beginning October 1, 2025.
Zach, do you have anything on that, or?
This I don't. I don't know if Angela does or not, or?
Yeah, the standard is to adopt what the Main Department of Health and Human Services sends, what their state minimums and maximums are. So it's just something that's on the order every year.
Excellent. Any public comments? Yes, ma'am? Come on up. Please state your name and where you live and?
Gemma Knight, live on 24 South Ridge Drive. I'm just not certain what you're saying is the level now what the state is, and so you're wanting to go forward with that for next year?
Yep, it changes, the state generally changes their maximums every year, and Standish follows their, their levels.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any council comments? Vocal?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So passes. Now we can move to new business.
All right, new business. 111-25, Authorized Finance Director to Issue Manusible Quick Claim Deed to Elizabeth Nickerson, Map 64, Lot 23, whereas the sole purpose of the deed is to release to the grantee herein any interest which the town of Standish may have acquired in the foregoing property by virtue of unpaid taxes as evidenced by tax lien certificates recorded in the Cumberland Registry of Deeds.
Make a motion to waive reading?
We'll second that. All in favor? So passes.
So the, these, these two are just quick claim deeds that the, these, these two accounts were basically the town leaned them because they had three years of unpaid taxes, and therefore we were legally obligated to lean them. But they have since paid everything that they've owed to them, and so the quick claim deed is just transferring interest back to the, back to the owner.
Public comments?
I have a question.
Council comments?
Is there anything to that name, finger to the man? It's unusual to have that name, I thought. Just trying to understand.
It may have been a business, and so that was their business name, but I don't know.
Thank you.
The deed says it's gonna be signed tomorrow. You guys are close tomorrow. Should we change, should I make a motion to change that to Wednesday?
Yes. Thank you.
Nice catch.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thomas and?
And Mr. Watson?
Could I make a motion that we vote on both of these quick claim deeds as one?
I'll second that.
Expedite the process?
Again, all in favor? Perfect. Great idea.
It was the deed on the other one that had to be changed.
Would you like her to read the second one, or?
I don't think so.
They're both the same.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
And both pass.
All right, moving on. So that was also 112-25 as well, correct? So moving on to 113-25, Waive the Bid Process for Purchase of an Ambulance. Whereas Section 302F of the Standish Charter requires a competitive bid process for the transactions exceeding 3,500 in value, unless so waived by the town council, and whereas the Public Safety Department investigated the option of purchasing three, this being the third, of the same type and manufacturer for the purpose of remounting the ambulance rear box on the new chassis as they come up for replacement the next time for approximately half the cost of a complete unit. Ordered the attached bid from Sugarloaf Ambulance and Rescue Vehicles for this ambulance in the amount not to exceed $440,882 is hereby accepted, and further ordered that the town manager is authorized on behalf of the town to execute related documents, contract documents.
Thank you. Jeep, you wanna talk about this, or?
Yeah, I mean, this is the third of, six or seven years ago, we decided to do this. This is 400.
You gotta get your mic on.
Can you get in the mic there?
Is that better? This is the third ambulance. The price is, voters approved 440,000 to purchase. It's a little over, but we can absorb that with some of the other stuff in the bond, it's less money, so. The new, to remount it, we got an updated quote. It's 200 to 225,000 to buy a new chassis and remount this. It just makes more sense. We're bonding him for 10 years, we might as well keep him for at least 10 or 12 years now instead of getting rid of him sooner. This is the final one of the three, and the next one hopefully, actually, it will be a lot cheaper, half the price, so.
Excellent. Any public comments? Seeing none. Any council comments? Mr. Pomelo?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. This is a great idea, the concept that we just come up with here. This, for the next 12 to 15 years, we can, we'll be swapping out the boxes. We can maybe swap it twice at least on the new chassis, so we'll just be buying a chassis and swapping the box out. So with an ambulance costing 450,000, in 10 years, it might be 550, 600,000, and all we're doing is swapping the box out, basically, to new chassis. Thinking outside the box, great idea, gonna save us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars because I think we talked in capital that we thought we could get, what, at least, or maybe two, at least two flips out of one, if not three, so. Cool, I'm happy. I think the town will be really happy once they see this put in play.
Mr. Watson? I just want to mention, as comparison, just the chassis itself was less than 90,000.
It's 82, I think it was, yeah.
You know, that's the, that's the cost difference there, to just buy the chassis in the future.
It just, it's, I don't want to make it sound like they just, they charge us some ton of money just to swap it over. They, they update it, paint it, you know, reconfigure the whole thing, whether it's new lighting, you know, DOT lighting and that sort of stuff. So it's like a kind of a, a complete overhaul for half the price, and we got a brand-new chassis out of it, so.
Awesome.
We have impact fee money for this as well, so that will help lessen what we have to bond.
Great, good point. Mr. Deacon?
Is this the main company, this Sugarloaf Ambulance?
Yeah.
Did they do the work here in Maine?
It's actually built in New Jersey. This is, they do a lot of the final work and final preparation here, but the welding and construction part of it is done in New Jersey. The remount would be done here in Maine when they do that, so. That's why we're sticking with the same manufacturer for three ambulances, so they're all the same, and they can complete it up here when it's all, all said and done.
I do like the idea of the replacing the box and, you know, working with a chassis. That's, that's a great concept. Only thing I think about is, over time, advances in medicine and medical equipment. If there are internal components of inside the ambulance that need to be upgraded and changed, is, I mean, I don't know enough about all, I mean, I'm sure they're complicated systems, but if you, if there will, I'm sure, over a decade, be changes and upgrades to equipment. Is it possible to swap out and improve things?
Equipment-wise, yeah. I mean, that's all kind of really, sad as it sounds, it's all separate. This is all just like the construction, the interior, you know, the heat and the, all the electronics and stuff in there. But yeah, so every time it goes back, that, that'll include upgrades when it, you know, when they do a remount, or rehabilitation, I guess, of the entire unit, so that, they follow all the standards that would have to follow for the government and whatnot, the Transportation Board and what, all that stuff, so.
Thank you.
When, when is the, after this one's purchased, when is the next unit due to be replaced?
Not this coming year, but the following year.
What unit is that?
That's our current Rescue 3.
Rescue 3, thank you. And that one, be, being this new Dodge, it's just gonna be the chassis that's replaced? Excellent. So instead of, at that time, instead of a half a million dollars, we're looking at 100,000, maybe?
Probably.
Just the chassis?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Vocal? Did you want to say something, or? Nope, okay, roll call.
You have a question now?
I have one, yes.
Oh, I didn't see you hand up.
You were down there.
Yes, sir, you can go.
You're ignoring this area up here.
I don't think so.
I had a nice ride in number two into the main men, and I'm telling you, the chassis in that vehicle had me going from one side to the other side, from Gorham Inn. And I didn't know whether I was gonna be at the hospital or not. And I'm just, how, on checking things like that, just to maybe other people do the same thing that I didn't want to do, do we check them and make sure all of those, and then make sure that? I thought, I'm saying sharks, shark, shark. And I, do we check things like that?
Oh, yeah, all the time, all the time. That, that's the truck that's being replaced with this one. One of the big things about these is that just has leaf spring suspension that kind of rides like it does. All these new ones have liquid spring suspension, so it's a much softer, smoother ride. You don't sway, you don't bounce.
Next time, get him the door. I don't want to fall out. That's the one thing, and I'm pleased that this, we do this, and I probably think all the other people that are going in, I had enough time, you know.
We'll strap you down tighter next time. I'm just kidding.
By the way, your, your union was great. The two young boys and the veteran in there who took care of Terry.
Perfect, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
And one thing we haven't mentioned is, we bond these ambulances out for 10 years, and we've only been getting seven years roughly out of the, an ambulance before. It's houred out in mileage, though. So by swapping these boxes out, even, because right now, we're bonding for 10 in seven years, they're, they're being traded or going down the road because they're worn out, the chassis on them, so. Because they set idle a lot, and hours on idle is, and then the hours on the meter, mileage, so this is a good thing for the town, too, because we'll get our money out of it, the bonding we're putting into them for 10 years. We'll now get 12 to 15 years out of these, just swapping out the chassis. So that's all I gotta say.
Awesome. Looking for any other questions? No, uh, vocal?
Gardner?
Yes. Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Palmo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So, passes. Excellent. Are there any public items tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to announcements. Does anybody here have any announcement?
Is there a ceremony tomorrow for the veterans?
I believe it's eleven?
We have been trying, we've tried to find out today, my, Kim has put out to two or three of the veterans, the town hall wasn't sure, the room got booked, but no one's followed